I'd like to welcome everyone to the Mayor Commission Work Session of April 12th. Local time is 11:02 a.m. And first item on the agenda is the CRA Contract Procurement Direction. Mr. Ruge.
Good afternoon. It feels like the afternoon because I've been running since I got up. But anyways, good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. Christopher Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. And yes, today I'm seeking direction on the procurement process for the outsourced services for the CRA. So I'll just go into a quick overview. I do want to highlight existing services, staff, and projects because I think it's important to sort of know where we're at right now. Then there was an assessment of, in my opinion, of what is going to be needed over the next three to five years from an agency perspective. Do you have a proposal based on those needs? What if those, if that direction is granted, the next steps, the timeline, and then happy to answer any questions that you may have. So as a quick overview, the CRA began outsourcing services in 2014. That was done through a request for proposal process and was awarded to Redevelopment Management Associated or RMA. That contract was renewed shortly thereafter. Last year, the CRA Board brought in the Executive Director position back in-house and is a city employee, that's myself. And this contract expires in September, which is requiring the need to procure those services once again. So this is what the existing structure looks like currently for the CRA, the Board, myself, and then the contracted firm which provides all of the personnel providing the services. I did throw in the Downtown Development Authority because, you know, there is a financial exchange there. So I think it's just important to show them as part of the overall effort of the CRA Board. The services that are currently provided, there's a variety of full-time staff. The notes on the side just show when those changes were made based on the contract amendments. But it's also important to note that there is a series of part-time staff or support staff that does come along with the existing set of services that are currently being outsourced under the contract. And you can see it is a variety of personnel and services that come with the existing setup. So what those staff do on a regular basis, and this is all per the existing contract that we have currently, are those daily operations of administration, which I think is kind of a point to note that moving forward, I think that is something that needs to be, have a better separation. So a little precursor to what I'll be proposing. Obviously, attending all the meetings, project management, things like that, as well as helping with the communications, property management, and other specific projects. So a variety of things that the outsourced contract is providing to the CRA currently. It is a pretty wide set of, a pretty wide, currently a wide scope of services. And then within that same contract, there are specific projects that are called out. And these straddle both CRA areas and a variety of projects that, some of which I know you're very familiar with. Others that have been completed and others that, you know, we are wrapping up and you'll have a report on here shortly. But this just gives you an idea that in addition to the services, there are specific things that we're asking the firm to deliver on so that we know, okay, you know, there is a level of specificity when we outsource this contract that we're expecting the firm to achieve. So it's important to also note some of the financial impacts that currently exist. So as sort of a starting off point, you can see that the total CRA budget, and this includes, you can see in the fiscal year, that's just the TIF, that doesn't include any carryforward for each area of the CRA. And then in the total personnel services, the reason the asterisk there under the 5.8 million is because that does include some innovative policing numbers. But that also includes what that serves, that's the total cost of personnel services. So in addition to the innovative policing, it also includes IT services, services that the city attorney provides us, and just a variety of other things that are included in those personnel costs. The actual contract that we pay RMA, that 1.1 million, broken out over a monthly period is 93,000. So that's what we're paying RMA for the staffing services that we currently have in place. Now how that compares to the other, these other CRAs in Boca, Hollywood, and Boynton is that if you were to, the way that they break it out, those numbers down there, the 2.4, 3.6, and 1.6, those are essentially what they're just paying in staff. So we're getting a pretty competitive deal with RMA the way it currently stands by outsourcing those services. So it's, the 2.4 would be compared to the 1.1 above. Does that make, is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Just thank you, Mayor. Chris, could you just clarify that? I want to make sure I understand. So you're saying RMA has contracts with these three locations as well?
No.
Oh, you're saying that these-
These are other CRAs that we can compare to.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is what they pay their staff. These three CRAs are currently, they're all in-house. So the only other in-outsourced CRA, and it's kind of a hybrid model, the one that I was able to find is Pompano Beach.
Okay.
So, and I, I'd have to go back and look at my notes of why they'd include Pompano Beach on that. And I think it was generally because I wanted to look at CRAs that were generally comparable either in size or budget of what they, their levels of responsibility, and that's why I essentially chose these three jurisdictions.
Okay, and then you made a comment that with our contract costs, it also includes more than just salary when you mentioned this comparison.
The 5.8, that 5.8 where it says total personnel services. So if you look at our budget, it's all lumped into that total personnel services, and that's that 5.8. So it's, and within that 5.8, there's a variety of things that are in that number, such as the costs that we pay for, you know, the city attorney to help us, IT, things like that. But also the innovative policing costs are lumped into that as well. So if, but the actual cost that we pay RMA is 1.1. So that's what we're paying to essentially staff the CRA.
Okay, minus the Executive Director?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So looking at the assessment of where we stand currently with the contract, most of the services have been fulfilled under this current structure. And about 70% of the projects are completed or underway. Obviously, we've seen some successes in some areas of our districts. And this is looking at everything really comprehensive. This is Northwood, Pleasant City, Broadway, as well as the downtown city center, the historic Northwest, Brelsford Park. One thing that is worth noting is that in the past, we have had work authorizations from the current contractor that exceed 1 million. So that is something to note that over the period of their contract, they have billed us in addition for other services. But one of their things that they have to provide is that supportive coordination with other city departments, which is occurring. And we have seen private development interest in the city as a result of the CRA activities. So as I've been out talking to folks outside of City Hall and in the community, there is a general satisfaction, I think, with the current structure, this outsourced model of the CRA, which is good. However, there's always areas of improvement. And those folks that have voiced areas of improvement have identified these three areas that they would like to see either more efforts or greater attention poured into by the CRA moving forward.
Chris, before you move off that slide, go back up to the third bullet. Some areas of CRA are more successful than others. You want to elaborate on that point a little bit, please?
Right, so if we look at sort of, it's because we're looking at two CRAs. So the service contract is really to address the Northwood Pleasant City Broadway CRA as well as the city center downtown historic Northwest CRA. So we've seen a lot of growth in some areas, but maybe not all areas. A good example would be Brelsford Park. Up until really recently, when we started talking to the folks over at NORA, there hasn't been a lot of, I think, redevelopment that has happened in that area. Whereas, you know, a lot of effort is being poured into, and rightfully so. This, it's not a critical, but I think if we're looking at holistically success across the CRA boards, there are some areas that we have seen more success and seeing redevelopment spurred or occurring versus others. I think another good comparison would be the Northwood Village Pleasant City area versus Broadway. There is a very strong desire by the community in the North End to see Broadway addressed and to see redevelopment occur along Broadway. So that's another good example. And that's, I think, just the nature of resources and where they've been dedicated to in the past by the CRA, but also just where we've been able to make headway with encouraging the private sector to follow CRA investment. So it's, again, it's just sort of a general assessment and observation of the current way that the contract is being executed under this, under this structure.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Chris, can you tell me, since we've identified that there are areas that are more successful than others in the CRA, do we know what the plan is, or is this the appropriate time to talk about how we overcome those differences? And what we're going to do in order to make sure that all of the areas have the opportunity to succeed?
It's, I think it is a good time to, in a very high level, talk about maybe what we want to put into the scope that we put out for bid for the contract. And I do have a slide for that where, you know, we're going to be expecting certain levels of service and we want, what we want achieved under those, under those different service items. So I don't know how much more detail you want to get into because, I mean, some of the areas you can really get into the weeds pretty quickly on just because, you know, there's just a lot of things that need to be addressed, depending on whichever area that you're looking at. But I think if you want to look at what you'd like to see achieved or what you want the contract to be clear on moving forward, then I think, yes, it is a good time to sort of elaborate. Okay, this is what we want to expect to see achieved by whoever is awarded this contract. Now is the time to mention that.
Let me suggest, Chris, as you sit down with Commissioner Warren and kind of go through historical and what's currently on the books.
Sure.
Going forward. So she has a level set. Get into the weeds and give her a level set on that. And then, yeah, we'll have a more detailed discussion as to, from a strategic planning standpoint, as to the future, where we're going with CRA. But at least let her get that information and answer any questions she may have, and anybody else that may want it. But she is the newest, and I think it's appropriate to. Would that help you, Commissioner?
Yes, it would, because I do feel that I'm at a disadvantage in this conversation, and I would really like to know.
You're never at a disadvantage.
Thank you.
We will make sure you get that information.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I'll make sure that, you know, we have, you have the full briefing on everything that the CRA is currently working on. Sure. So before I actually get into recommendation and the proposal for moving forward, I did just want to give you a quick overview of how I came to my conclusions. So first off, there was general research about community redevelopment agencies across the state of Florida, which there's quite a few, but really there's a small portion of them that really apply to the city of West Palm Beach. And when we look at those, we're really sort of on the cutting edge of both activity and what we're doing in the community. Most of this, most other CRAs around the state of Florida are very small and provide sort of just general basic services. Internally, obviously, I did my own assessment and looking at the current workload and what we have on the books. I've spoken to many of you with the exception, I'm sorry, Commissioner Warren, I haven't had a chance to speak to you. But for the most part, I've spoken to other commissioners about thoughts and ideas. And the last thing is that the internal auditor has gone through a very thorough analysis of the CRA and has also outlined ways that this agency could be improved, which we're currently finishing up. Outside of City Hall, I've, obviously, I've embraced the, and really sort of enhanced the Community Redevelopment Advisory Board that is responsible for the North End. Actually presented this presentation to them on Friday to give them an idea because I did solicit their input and ideas of what they would like to see happen. In the historic Northwest, had a meeting with some of the business owners there to get their thoughts and ideas. And then lastly, the Chamber of Commerce, I had a Dennis Grady offered the opportunity for me to brief their Government Affairs Committee. And I was able to actually speak to them and get some ideas. But I will say that, you know, they were one of the groups that said, hey, we're really happy with just how the city is growing and the way it's moving forward. So they had a lot of positive things to say about what's happening with the CRA currently. So what was heard generally is that there is a desire for greater business development, one way or another, to just either retain or grow the businesses that are there, improving just overall communications with our businesses, the residents in these, in the areas that we're responsible for. From the internal auditor, there does need, in their opinion, a dedicated person for budget and process accountability. And then just making sure that we maintain sort of a depth of redevelopment knowledge and sort of that deep bench, if you will, of understanding. There is value that is seen throughout groups that, that is valuable. And then lastly, people want to see more events and activations, which honestly is no surprise in the, considering the fact that for almost the, well, for a little over a year now, we've all been in lockdown. So there is a thirst to see events and activations moving forward. So as, looking at all of that and then also doing the assessment, there's a variety of things that, on the left side is sort of the position, if you will. And then on the right side is what activities are going to be needed, right? So we have sort of the folks that'll be implementing things and then what we are going to need them to achieve moving forward. So if we look at project management, they touch on a lot of different aspects of services that we're going to see throughout the CRAs. And it's going to be extensive. There are heavy workloads, and a lot of them are going to be quite demanding. On the construction management, not so much. But the interesting thing about construction management is that it is a very tedious day-to-day maintenance of making sure that the projects are on time. Anytime you get into a construction project, there are challenges every single day. So just because there's not a lot of responsibility maybe in the list of services, it is a demanding position. On the real estate management, this really gets into a lot of the different things that, A, the properties that we have, whether they're Lot 23 or 314 Clematis, but then also forward-thinking in ways that we can help our businesses grow and future planning to make sure that we're continuing to be that catalyst for redevelopment in our communities. Marketing and promotion, again, something that maybe they don't have a lot of service responsibilities, but the demands change every single day. And a lot of times, our marketing and promotion are sometimes our easiest and quickest way to deploy resources and help to our CRA areas when we really have no other options. A good example is just the other day with the needs for some road closures, getting some information out to our businesses as well as giving them the tools to explain to their customers how they could still support businesses while those roads are closed. That's all marketing and promotion, and a lot of times, they have to change on a dime. So again, a very demanding position. So on the business development side, this is something that, coming from economic development, I feel really sort of will be housed in the senior leadership of the CRA. So the CRA Executive Director as well as the Deputy Director. And then the special project guidance, this is that deep bench, if you will. So when we have something that's unique or special that comes up, this is where we tap into that expertise that maybe isn't in the office every day, but is something that we're going to need, especially when we start talking about public-private partnerships or unique projects that are going to require a level of creativity that maybe is just sort of unique and essential. And then lastly, everything needs money to get it done. So we'll make sure that, and this also goes to some of the audit recommendations to make sure that everything is financially planned and we set budgets accordingly. So what I like to call is when you tie all that together, it sort of makes a fun little trampoline. And then that's when we'll start seeing our projects come there for a cook. You knew it was baked in there, Mayor.
Oh.
Okay, so Commissioner Warren, to get to your point about, okay, so that's all great. We know we need the services. What are we going to achieve by putting all of this together? And this is sort of that breakdown to give you an idea of what we hope to achieve with those staff and the services that they provide and the specific tangible outcomes. So when we start looking at all of the different things under these categories, it gives you an idea of the personnel needed for them and the team that will be assembled in order to get them done. And then underneath each bullet point, an idea of the project that they will be tasked to achieve. So, and these are all things that are currently underway or are being planned moving forward. So it's quite extensive, and all of those different roles touch each project in a different way. Any questions? I know that that was a lot of information between the two. So I just want to kind of stop there and see if there's any discussion.
Board members, any questions? Okay, you can proceed, Mr. Ruge.
Okay, so all that being said, the proposal being presented to you today is essentially to, first and foremost, remove all administrative functions from the current contract requirement. So that would be a greater internalization of strictly those administrative functions that clearly separate scope of services and that supervising and administrative responsibility that currently exists in the contract.
Give us an example.
Excuse me?
Give us an example.
So as we manage projects and just processing invoices and maintaining the way that we execute contracts and things like that, all of those things will be completely internalized and managed under dedicated staff that are city employees. So myself, the Deputy Director, the Administrative Assistant, and then adding the position of a Budget and Finance Manager position or Budget and Process Manager position, that's essentially your core foundation. Those four individuals will be sort of the core foundation of the team that are city employees that are essentially there to make sure that the contract by, executed with the service provider is supervised, administrative properly, or we have all the accountability measures in place. And that we also are abiding by all of the internal processes and procedures that are required by the city. And there is a very clear delineation about what the scope of responsibilities is for the service, the contract service provider, and what the city and CRA staff, that internal staff, is responsible for. So that there is no question anymore about who is supposed to be doing what.
Okay.
So all of the-
Question from Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Chris. Can you describe what types of situations that would help us prevent? Because it sounds like you're describing what we hope it will look like, but what are we, by changing, what are we hoping to prevent?
So in the, what we're hoping to prevent is any kind of finger pointing on responsibilities and who is supposed to be doing what and who is supposed to be paying for what type of items. So that it is, it's very clear, and there's that clear delineation about making sure that, you know, we're managing staff accordingly. Because the way it currently stands right now is that the service provider is saying, okay, city, you're going to manage and administer all of, you know, just the daily operations of the, of the CRA activities, and so that falls under me. Because, you know, rarely does RMA call and say, hey, what's happening? You know, they leave all the supervising and administrative stuff to myself. And so, but, you know, with the, with the exception of me, everybody else still remains an RMA employee. And I just feel like there's sort of a level of inefficiency and lack of clarity on that clear delineation of who's supposed to be managing and responsible for just daily administrative and supervisory positions. As well as a lot of things, and you'll see it shortly, a lot of things were pointed out in the internal auditor report where they want some processes put in place as well that I think having a dedicated internal team will also help with those to make sure that, again, there's no clarity, there's no, there's no confusion about what the CRA outsourced firm is supposed to be doing because they don't have access to our finance department. City staff has access to our finance department and our processes and our database and all of those different things. And so it just needs to be a little bit clear so that we say to whoever is outsourced, there is no, there is no requirement for you to have to coordinate with our financial, or for our finance department. You know, we have an internal administrative team that is going to handle all of those items, and the core team is these four individuals.
That makes sense. Great, thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure that you have an answer for me right now, but would it be anticipated, you know, these employees, we're talking about the Deputy Director, the Administrative Assistant positions, these are current RMA employees, I assume. And is it anticipated-
Two of them are.
Two of them are. Okay. Is it anticipated that those RMA employees will come over as city employees? Or would it be opened up in a, you know, a posted position type of thing? What's your thoughts right now on how that'll occur?
Sure. So because we would be taking over those roles, there would be just a very open and upfront transparent hiring process where we would open it up for, you know, folks to apply for those positions. And that's just to be very clear about selecting those positions. The RMA employees are aware of it, and, you know, I've encouraged them to apply when the postings are, if this does move forward, I would encourage them to apply along with, you know, whoever else may throw their hat in the ring.
Quick follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything preventing the RMA employees from being onboarded as city staff? I know some of these contracts in other arenas have prohibitions against hiring contracted employees, bringing them in as your own. Is there anything that would prevent us from doing that?
I have not identified any preclusions that would keep them from applying. Sure.
Any other?
Okay, so just to, just to wrap up, I mean, so with the exception of those four positions, Executive Director, Deputy Director, Admin Assistant, and the Budget and Process Manager, everybody else would remain under that contracted scope of services that the firm would be obligated to provide. There has been a little, I think, in order to tighten up some of the financial planning and budget preparation, that would be something I would say needs to be included in the contract under that monthly fee. And that is very clear upfront. In the past, especially when we looked at the million dollars of work authorizations that were paid in the past, I think there's just some clarity that needs to be wrapped into that services. So it's very clear upfront what is going to be included in the scope of services for whoever is awarded the contract. And then also, moving forward, I have identified a couple of things that I also think are going to be very helpful as we move towards data-driven decision-making and also chasing other grant opportunities to augment a lot of the projects that we have available. As needed, I would like to see this firm also add- As needed, I would like to see this firm also add data management and some grant-writing technical expertise that we could tap into when needed. So it looks like this, when you start breaking it up, internal staff, those four positions, on the full-time side, two project managers, marketing manager, marketing coordinator, real estate manager, and construction management. These would be folks that would be required to report to the CRA on a daily basis. On the part-time, on an as-needed basis, these other positions to help us augment when needed during the times that essentially those additional services are called upon. So looking at the expense side of it, now again, this is just costs that would be internal that we would, that the CRA would pay for those internal positions, so it's not a savings per se, this is just doing the full analysis of what it's going to cost to pay, you know, to have those folks be city employees. And this is based on the information that I got from our HR department, that if you internalize those four positions, you can expect an annual cost initially of almost about $500,000 on a regular basis, or about 4% of that, of the overall personnel services budget. And it includes all of these items listed below, which I mentioned previously. And one thing to know is...
So, Chris, though, to compare apples to apples, that top line number, the 5.8, is a little bit misleading. It's really the one point, I mean, I know that's the total we paid, but if we're looking at the current contract, RMA, versus what you're proposing, what we're paying RMA is what, closer to the 1.1, 1.2?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
1.1. So yes, to your point about what we would take out of that contract, it would be that 1.1. So yes, that's a better way to describe the overall costs.
Okay. Yes, Mr. President.
Since the mayor mentioned the 1.1 RMA annual staffing, where does that $1 million of additional, that additional staffing requests, or you said it made it sound like at some point in the past, there was an additional $1 million. Is that annually? Is that something that happened years ago?
No. That was, a lot of those have been identified by the internal auditor and also by us doing analysis of work authorizations that were approved, and this is over the life of the contract, that they weren't, it wasn't a lump sum $1 million. It was sort of a variety of things that we just authorized for services that RMA had essentially billed us for, that they viewed as being above and beyond their current scope of services.
And therein lies the wisdom, board members, in having an executive director in-house, because prior to this, you basically had an RMA employee approving an RMA request. And so we didn't have, we, the city, did not have an objective set of eyes looking at that request to say, hey, maybe you're already providing this under your contract. So this justifies the decision that I think many of you are on here. I recommend it and that you support it, because now we have an independent set of eyes of RMA, or whoever the provider is, does say, we need more money. Now we have somebody who objectively could say, no, you don't need more money. Anyway. Thank you. Yes.
Quick follow-up. So that $1 million was over many years potentially?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't, at one point, it was $1 million additional in one particular year, it was $1 million spread out over a period of time?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it wasn't that many years. When did they get their contract first?
2014.
Yeah, so, yeah, but you're right, it's over multiple years as opposed to a one year.
And this is, just takes that initial, so you can sort of compare, so everything in orange are internal, blue is outsourced, and obviously, everybody reports to the CRA Board. So again, assuming that next steps, if we move forward under this proposal, we would update that RFP for the CRA services, and we would outline that these are the type of items that we would like, we would seek in that advertisement, and adjust the scope to be very clear about what our expectations are of services that are provided by an outsourced company, and update the project list and add the grant-writing aspects as well as the data management. And then moving forward, the timeline, again, work session today, we can have most of the everything buttoned up by the time that the agreement expires with RMA, so that there isn't a delay or lap in services, and there has to be some type of extension. The idea is that we don't miss a beat, and we proceed along a normal path regardless of who is selected for that CRA contract for outsourced. And then obviously, if we're going to move in this direction, I would recommend that we do the internal hiring of those persons before we select the contractor to provide the scope of services. And that concludes my presentation. Obviously, this affects both CRA areas, which are primarily housed in District 3 and District 1, represented by Commissioner Schoeff and Commissioner Fox respectively, and we...
Sorry.
And then, so with that today, city commissioners, I recommend, or the recommendation is, on the direction is to move forward with this request for proposals, including these three bullet points. So thank you very much for, I know that took some time, but I did want to be thorough, so thank you all very much.
And then thank you for a very fine report. Did you run that timeline through procurement and they're comfortable with?
I did, yeah. Actually, last, late last week, Nancy confirmed the timeline for me, Nancy Erchek, in the city attorney's office.
All right. Board members, questions, comments? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. I think I really liked this model of having, you having a deputy that hopefully could free up some of your time, I think, to look over more of the big picture items. I just had a couple of questions. You mentioned at one point that most of the services had been fulfilled through RMA, but I was curious, like, which ones are not fulfilled? Does the contract work in a way that, let's say we have more projects than we anticipated, that we need additional resources? I mean, can we just go back to them anytime we need something and they can provide additional resources? I'm just wondering why the services might not have been fulfilled? Was it because we didn't have enough people, or just some other reason?
I will tell you that primarily the reason why some of the services, and I honestly, I didn't have the list of services handy with me in the contract, but just in the short time that I've been executive director, it's primarily due to workload. And every day, it's something different, a new challenge arises. So a lot of times, you know, we set pretty ambitious goals, and I think in the, in the current contract, you know, that was no exception. But then there's just the reality of a lot of things that need to get addressed on a regular basis. So it's primarily due to workload, and then I also think that moving forward, some of the things have been difficulty in finding somebody. So the real estate management position is a really good example. I've been working with Kim Briesmeister and Chris Brown to try to find that real estate management person. It's just very hard to find somebody right now. And so that's something where Andy Zitman, who's in the office, is sort of doing construction management in real estate, but he's one man, trying to do two things, and helping with the Dunkin' Donuts and 314 Clemadest Street and Lot 23, as well as the Sunset Lounge and a lot of our other construction projects. It's a lot for him to take on on a regular basis, so there's going to be gaps in services that aren't being fulfilled because of those challenges.
Follow, Commissioner.
Thank you. I was curious, this seems like such a very specific business model. Are there many companies that do something similar to RMA that we will be able to have other companies applying for this?
I think, yes, it is a bit of a niche market, but I think that we would probably be able to identify about, you know, three to five firms that may be willing to bid on the contract.
Thank you.
If I recall correctly, we didn't have a shortage of interest when we did the initial RFP.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And regarding the types of services that we contract for, and I know that maybe we'll get into that more when the contract expires and, or as we start to look at the RFP for that, but you mentioned very early on that you had three bullet points, and I remember one of them was communications that you had received feedback that we could do better on. Does our contract limit us to the type of communications? And would it be extra, extra work, extra money if at some point you, the CRA Board, were to say, you know, hey, we want to look more creatively about how we communicate? Is that still contained within?
I think it is still contained within, and it's a great point, Commissioner, because we're actually doing an assessment of our week of outreach a couple of weeks ago to the historic Northwest, and we've already identified ways that we can improve for the next time. I think the only way that we start getting outside of our scope is if we start demanding, say, an additional communications or marketing person that begins to match more of a full-time look than, say, a part-time, just, hey, could you give us some ideas of, you know, some creative ways to reach out to the community or market a community or something like that? I think that's still very much in the scope, but it's more of the time that staff spends on it that we have to be concerned about. But right now, it's something that falls within, I think, the purview of the contract. Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another question, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Also, on that slide, when you had talked about the three areas that we could do better, the second bullet was business development, and then I noticed that the business development on one of the slides that talked about responsibilities of the contractor and the executive director, that that was split. Can you talk a little bit more about...
Are you talking about here? Is this what...
No.
So even have all that pretty stuff, we could go through these slides a lot quicker, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Okay, but that is very helpful.
Yeah, so on the business development side, because, you know, when we talk about business development, I mean, it's just, it's hard for me not to gravitate right into economic development. So when we talk about business development, there's a lot of things that I think fall underneath that category. I mean, are we talking about retaining existing businesses? Are we talking about expanding existing businesses? Because you could do a whole business retention effort, or business expansion and retention effort, BRE. It's a classic economic development 101 model where there is a very specific way to do this, and it's done across the United States. So that's one area of business development, and it's probably the best place to start because we know 90% of our jobs are going to come from the existing businesses that are here. That's just the way it works. You work with what you have. That's usually the best way to create more opportunity. However, there is sort of that recruitment aspect of it, which I think the BDB does really, really well, and requires a whole nother set of efforts, primarily on the marketing and promotion side, where you just need to properly start getting the word out and creating, I think, some packaging and some notoriety about the different areas. Great example is our opportunity zone that runs along Broadway. That could be a great tool that we have if we just sort of gauge and create a promotion package around it. So that's why, you know, looking at the business development side of it, you know, and knowing that we have now an economic development director between myself, that person, and the deputy director, I think you have more than enough folks to help create it, and if there is something that is needed in addition to that, it's probably going to be some type of subcontracted service where we're needing somebody to create a website, or put together a marketing piece that's creative, which I would rely on some type of outside contractor. But the actual strategies and what we're going to do, and the oversight of executing that plan, I think, can be done by those three positions or a combination of all three.
That's great. Mayor, I have one last question.
Oh, you can have more than one?
Thank you. Chris, I really appreciate the reinvigoration that you have done with the CRA Advisory Board, and I hear very good things about that board. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Schoeff isn't here today, she usually reports in on how the meeting went. And so you mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that you presented this just recently to them. Can you share with us any of the feedback that they had about this moving forward?
You know, it's, one thing is that we also covered security in that meeting, which took the lion's share of the discussion, rightfully so, because, you know, we see it as a strategic, important piece of redeveloping the Broadway corridor. But once I gave the presentation, there was some comments, really, the only minor one was about, you know, what we intend to do with, or if current staff could apply for the existing, or for the positions once they're hired, and, you know, I gave them the same title, or the same answer that I gave the Board today, which is, yes, they can apply for it, just like anybody else. So that was really most of the feedback that I've gotten, which I wasn't too surprised because, you know, they had given me their input initially, and so when I wrapped up my presentation, I told them, I said, I hope that you see your initial feedback in asking, like, okay, what does the CRA need for the next three to five years? And hopefully, it's reflected in there. Didn't receive a lot of comments. We were also close to the bell at the end of the meeting, so we only had about 10 minutes for discussion, but really, there wasn't much dialogue about this moving forward. And then at the same time, since this isn't like a formal resolution or anything like that, there wasn't need for really much of a recommendation from the CRA Board, so they were just sort of appreciative of me sharing the information with them.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And, board members, as the RFP is developed, you all, we all, will have a chance to weigh in on what that looks like, correct?
On the scope? So, I mean, I would assume so.
If you'd like to see it, we can certainly make it available.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to let the board members take a look at and provide any input that they may have, since it's a company that's going to be serving the CRA, and we're the board.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Anything else on this? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I just wanted to go on record, Chris, to say thank you so much to your team for those meetings in the historic Northwest a couple of weeks ago. I think they were very well-received. I think that it was very thorough. I know that there is so much information that they, you know, the residents need to digest, so having it over three nights, I think, really did a great job to accommodate them, everyone on your staff and many of the city staff as well, just, I think, did an excellent job, so thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner, I really appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Rube, thank you for this item, and we look forward to hearing more, looking at the RFP and being further briefed on this as it evolves. Okay. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters, so do any of you have anything for the bit of the body? Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm not expecting us to discuss it now, but if we can identify, you know, the next workshop so that we can discuss committee and board assignments, since there are meetings that are coming up, and I don't want the city to be underrepresented.
Could we do that at the end of a commission meeting?
You can.
Yeah. Well, we just try to, I don't know how long the agenda is for Monday's meeting, but maybe we could tack it on there. Do we have a long agenda?
I don't recall how lengthy the agenda is, and then you never can tell by the printed agenda, it depends on comments.
That's true.
Here, that extends it out, but to President Paduzzi's specific question, you know, I responded back to Phyllis Brooks that I was going to put that item on the very next work session agenda, given that this particular work session had been structured as a single item agenda. So I've already scheduled that in, but certainly, the board can still have a discussion.
Would it be two weeks from today? Does that give you enough time, and you need to do that sooner?
No, I think two weeks is fine, I just didn't want it to go longer than that. There are meetings that are going to take place within that period of time, but I think the important ones, we probably have coverage with the alternative, with the alternate members that are already on the board, such as TPA, I think we'll be all right.
Well, let me ask this. If the meeting proceeds smoothly on Monday night, since this isn't really a... If the meeting proceeds smoothly on Monday night, since this isn't really a public item, can we call an audible at the end of the commission meeting and see if we can get this wrapped up then? Or does that have to be publicly noticed? Because the public doesn't come to these administrative meetings, right?
Your meeting is publicly noticed, and it's okay to add items to any publicly noticed meeting, if it's something that would normally be handled.
No, the particular meeting at which the commissioners select their committee members, that's a public meeting that has to be noticed?
It normally is part of either your work session meeting, where they delegate, or a commission meeting, so yes. It's normally part of a public meeting.
So the answer is, we can't call an audible?
You can add it to your agenda, though, at Monday night, that's fine.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, on your agendas, every single item that you discuss do not necessarily have to be listed, and you're still applying the appropriate law. So you're fine to add it to Monday's meeting also.
All right, why don't we see if we could do that? Let's see how Monday meetings go. Monday's meeting goes. We have the backup of it being on the workshop two weeks from today, but if things are proceeding smoothly on Monday, perhaps we can, you could pick it up then, toward the end of the meeting, to get two bites of the apple.
Yes, we can revise Monday's agenda and get that published, so that the public gets notice that that item is being added.
All right, why don't you do that, because we can always move it, I guess, but, yeah, why don't you do that?
Certainly.
That'll, you know, give a sense of urgency to the item, which I think is appropriate. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I think something that would help expedite the conversation, whichever night it takes place, would be if Phyllis sends out this list, which I think she has done, and asks any commissioners who are currently on boards if they'd like to serve on other boards, relinquish their position, and/or, of course, Commissioner Warren, as the new member on the commission, express her interest, and that way, Phyllis can usually put all that together, so that we know, I guess, we know at that meeting, so that it's not an awkward conversation of, "Oh, hey, I want, you know, I want this, I want this."
Yeah, so you have to do some homework, Mr. President, but we're trying to accommodate your request, sir. All right. Anything else for the good of the body? All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.